The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening here, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to all of our guests that watch us and the people that are sitting in their back row here. The regular meeting of Waverne City Council held in council chambers at 6:00 PM, Monday, December 11, 2023. This will be our last meeting of the year, and so it is with great privilege of saying that we served you well, hopefully, here. And the first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held November 27, 2023.
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Called question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Tonight, first off, additions to the agenda, Mr. Warren?
Administration has none tonight.
Council? We have none. Tonight, we welcome Youth Counselor Jackson Stadnik, and with you are our youth representative here. You can ask questions if you have, raise your hand if you wish to ask a question. You, as Youth Counsel, you have no voting privileges, but you can ask questions and put it, make comments as you wish if there's something that you'd like to feel strongly that you'd want to be heard. Public hearings and notices, there are none. Reports to standing committees, we have the Police Commission delivered by Counselor Van Bette, if you would please.
Thank you, your worship. Regular meeting, Waverne Police Commission is held in administrative boardroom at 4:00 PM Tuesday, November 21, 23. Additions to the agenda, under old business to 2024 budget, under new business, federal gun procedures and Waverne Police Service website. Approval of the minutes of the Police Commission meeting held October 17 was passed and carried. Under reports, Mayor's report, Chief London provided a report on the Waverne Police Service strategic goals and objectives and statistics since the previous monthly report. There has been minimal change in criminal code violations with the notable exception of a rise in charges related to impaired and dangerous driving. Chief London gave an overview of employee stats for the month of October and what can be expected for staffing in November. He highlighted recent training by a couple of members in Vancouver. Chief London also highlighted several communication and engagement successes, including the budget open house, updated website, and work with community organization and provincial agencies. This report was received by the board. Chief London presented the budget comparison report as of October 31. Under unfinished business, the 2024 budget was reviewed and discussed. New business, Chair McCormick noted if anyone has any submissions, send them to him. Chief London noted that a member on return to work duty has been developing a new theme for the Waverne Police Service website. Chief London provided an overview of the new theme and will continue to work with the members on suggestions from the board, including the board webpage and reports uploaded to the website. Federal gun procedures, Mayor Roy inquired where the federal legislation is at, amnesty timeline, and the gun buyback program. Chief London noted that federal legislations will be mandatory, but the Saskatchewan government, as indicated, they will be looking at different direction for our province, but has not been clear on what that is yet. The board discussed upcoming targets for the 2024 budget, including areas to reduce spending for foreseeable expenses and mandatory projects. The board moved into in-camera items and back out again at 6:20, and the meeting was adjourned.
We will mark that as received. The next one is that there's no delegations, proclamations, petitions. Consent agenda, do you have a motion, please? On the consent agenda, we have the water treatment plant report, the public works for November, the water treatment plant report is from before November also, building department report for November, cash activity report for October, and do we have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll move that the items on the consent agenda be approved.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Those will be received and can be found on our city website. Motions, the first motion, council payable, do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $2,784,573.45 from November 1, 2023 to November 30, 2023 be passed for payment.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Next note is boards and, no, council meeting schedule, City Clerk Richter?
Thanks, your worship. So in the past, council has elected to set their yearly council meeting schedule at the end of each year for the following year. So for 2024, there's just a few things to note when planning for the 2024 schedule. Normally, council has elected to only hold one meeting in July and one meeting in August just to allow for council and staff to go on holidays, the peak holiday season. There's a couple of dates there that I've mentioned in my report, so the normal dates in 2024 would be July 8 and 22, and then August 12 and 26. And I am suggesting that perhaps you would hold one meeting in July on July 15, and then as well in August, just hold one meeting on August 12. That kind of evenly separates those meetings with about a month apart for each one. And then according to the council procedure by law, any holidays that fall on a Monday, the council meeting would automatically move to Tuesday, and there's really only one or two dates throughout the year that that would be affected. And then the only other thing that I would suggest that that's maybe a little out of the normal would be because of the 2024 election, the local government election, that is occurring on November 13 of 2024. Of course, that's a Wednesday, and Monday would be Remembrance Day November 11. So council, if they chose to meet, first meeting of November, they would meet the night before election. I would suggest that council don't meet that evening, it's just too close to proximity to the election, and I would recommend that council cancel that meeting altogether and just hold one meeting in November, which would be the the fourth Monday of November. The only other thing for council to consider in the 2024 council calendar would be December 23, council meeting, council may wish to also to cancel. And so I've kind of provided you those recommended dates, and would ask if council wishes to set the schedule as recommended.
Okay, go ahead, make the motion, and then we'll go from there.
Thanks, your worship. I'd make a motion that council approve the proposed 2024 council meeting calendar to include the cancellation and rescheduling of 2024 meetings as follows. Cancel July 8 and 27 council meetings and reschedule one meeting for July 15. Cancel the August 26 council meeting, leave one meeting for August to be held on August 12. Cancel the November 12 council meeting and cancel the second meeting of December that would be scheduled for December 23.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
And just for, to point of clarification, provincial election is going to be set for, and city election is roughly?
I don't have the provincial date, I believe it's the fourth Wednesday of October, whatever that day is.
Oh yeah, but we go in in November.
And then ours is November 13. The city's is November 13.
All right, question?
Thanks, your worship. I guess city manager or or director of finance, you know, right now is the time of year when we're sort of finalizing our budget for the upcoming year, and next year will be no different, it'll be the time of year, but right, you know, when there's an election happening, clearly it would be it would be unusual to have that happening. So how do we, how will that council, I guess, how will they do budget next time?
Yeah, so we have to alter our whole process for budget because of where the election is. This is one of the reasons why we try to push for a different election date for cities. We will not have a budget, I bet, approved in in December, and maybe it'll be January that year. So what will happen is there'll be some budget work done prior to election, although it's be prep work done by administration. Most of all the budget work will happen after the after election. So when that election happens on November 13, the very first meeting for the new council will be the 28th. You're looking at, you know, budget deliberations, discussions in December. It's kind of what I'm looking for right now for a for kind of a timeline. Lauren and myself will be sitting down and talking about this in the spring, and coming back to this council with some timelines of work out great that way. It's a little harder, but that's kind of our direction right now for that.
Very good, thank you. Do you have a discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Boards and committee appointments, city manager?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So mayor and council, for the city, Waverne establishes committees, commissions, and boards, and appoint members of council or citizens to be members of those bodies. In addition, there's terms of reference for these bodies, and they provide information and well-considered advice to council and staff on issues of concern to the public and the city. Educate and raise awareness to both the council and the staff, and provide recommendations for consideration by council and staff. So members contribute development of policies, procedures, and initiatives by working with the city council to improve services and programs within our community. So each year, you, a city council, approve boards and committees. Appointments are to be made, can be made throughout the year, whenever vacancies are occurring, but we have attached tonight for you guys the recommend 2024 board and committee appointments. That includes new appointments for certain council members and any vacancies we had moving forward, but if there is vacancies, we always do encourage the public to reach out to the city if they are looking to join any of our boards and committees that way. So through administration, we recommend that city council approve the 2024 board and committee appointments as presented.
Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I would move that the list of individuals on the document provided be and are hereby appointed to boards and committees on behalf of the city of Waverne for the year 2024.
I'll second that, your worship.
Called to question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Tax enforcement, six-month notice, Director Masal?
Yes, thank you. So our city assessor, Abby Gary, has submitted the six-month notice report. As per section 23 of the Tax Enforcement Act, a six-month notice will be sent out to the following properties. The six-month notice will be served to all persons who appear on or have interest on the title of the property. This notice is served to give all the opportunity to redeem the land before the city authorizes proceedings to request title of the property from the provincial mediation board. After a period of six months, the city will make a request from PMB for consent of title. So this is for the 2022 original property tax roll. These properties have not paid more than half of their taxes owing, and I believe there is 68 properties for a total of $164,019.54.
Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I move that city assessor be authorized to continue under section 23 of the Tax Enforcement Act to serve six-month notice to all properties that still have outstanding property taxes from 2022 original roll for a total of $164,019.54 as presented.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Six?
So when we talk about our budget and we're doing our budget, what's 1% equate to in in dollars if we're to cut our budget, the budget we're going to vote on tonight? What does it equate to?
It's about $100,000.
1%?
Yeah.
So we've got well over 1% cut if we have everybody paid their taxes. Okay, all right, that's, just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Mr. Van Bette?
Thank you, worship. I think that being said, Laurie, I don't think this is out of the norm, this is kind of where we've been the last number of years, I believe.
Yeah, so last year, we pulled the numbers, we had 42 properties, and it was 112,000.
And I think that the other thing that has to be pointed out, too, that people don't realize that half the taxes, or maybe what, a little less than half the tax, say a $3,000 property taxes, half of that is is basically school taxes, and whether we've collected this or not, we still have to pay that school tax forward, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And so we're, the city is actually out that money, because the province wants their school taxes, and we have to pony it up, and then it's up to us to collect this money. So that is where we're sitting at. Okay, moving forward, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. City Manager Warren, we have building official appointment.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So the city of Waverne employs one qualified licensed billing official in-house that administers, regulates, enforces billing codes and standards. There are three primary classes of license under which billing officials are authorized to provide plan reviews, inspection and enforcement of services, and categorized by major occupancy and size of buildings. So class one covers one and two unit dwellings. Class two covers any building that falls under part nine of National Billing Code, including class one and application of the National Energy Code of Canada for buildings to part nine of buildings. Class three covers all buildings under then BC, including class one and two and application of NECB to all buildings. So under subsections 16-2 and 16-3 of the Construction Codes Act of 2021, Miss Palley has the authority to appoint a licensed billing official. So on October 2 of 2023, Patrick Grunert started with the city of Waverne as a class one licensed billing official. So the recommendation tonight is that the city council appoints Patrick Grunert as a licensed billing official for the city of Waverne.
Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that pursuant to subsections 16-2 and 16-3 of the Construction Codes Act 2021, Patrick Grunert be appointed as a licensed building official for the city of Waverne.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion? Called question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. City Manager Warren, border revision and border revision secretary appointments.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So I'll actually talk to seven, to seven, seven F and G tonight, so on November 22, 2021, Western Municipal Consulting Limited was approved to manage the border revisions and the Development Appeals Board for the city of Waverne. So what we're asking tonight from council is that, one, city council, through the border revisions and border revision secretary appointments occur for tonight, and also Development Appeals Board and Development Appeals Secretary of the Board appointments occur tonight, and I need two different motions for that tonight.
First motion? Do you have it?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the names presented by Western Municipal Consulting be accepted.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Second motion?
Thanks, your worship. I'd make a motion that the city of Waverne appoints Western Municipal Consulting Limited to manage the Development Appeals Board process for the term of January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024 remuneration as set out in Western Consulting Limited's B schedule with the members presented to be the members of the Development Appeals Board. Secondly, further, that the city of Waverne appoints Claudette McGuire with Western Municipal Consulting as secretary to the Development Appeals Board for the term January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024 remuneration set out as in Western Municipal Consulting's B schedule. If Claudette McGuire is unable to perform secretarial functions for the reason, for reasons which may include scheduling difficulties, the secretary may appoint a delegate to perform administrative functions and may appoint a recording secretary for the purposes of any hearing.
Do we, I'll second her.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Introduction of bylaws, this is our bylaw 2023 3472, official community plan amendment.
It's me again, your worship. So OCP amendment is required for the property owned by Bree Patterson located at 343 Second Street, which was recently rezoned to a neighborhood commercial, to an R2, which is residential semi-detached. So if council proceeds with the first reading of bylaw 2023 3472 at this meeting, then public notice will be sent out in accordance with our public notice policy for a public hearing to occur on January 8 of 2024. I put 2023 in the report, I should maybe move forward with that. Official community plan 2020 3411, so the property is currently in neighborhood commercial land use designation. The APN is requesting that the lands be designated residential on the land use designation map on the OCP. So again, I have a location of the said property. So we require ministerial approval for this, so OCP amendments must be approved by Ministry of Government Relations after final reading of bylaw 2023 3472. It'll be submitted to the province for ministerial approval for the bylaw to be approved. So we have two options in front of council tonight. Option one is council gives first ring to bylaw 2023 3472, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan to designate the aforementioned land as residential on the future land use and the land use designation map and direct administration to advertise bylaw 2023 3472 as per our public notice policy. And option two is for council to provide refusal to bylaw 2023 3472, but there must be a reason for that refusal. So the staff is recommending option one, that council gets first ring for bylaw 2023 3472 to amend the OCP bylaw as mentioned above.
Your worship, with your permission, I'll declare conflict on this.
Okay. I'm going to leave just before. Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that bylaw 2023 3472, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2020 3411, the official community plan for the purpose of amending the land use designation of lots one, two, and three, block 75, Plan S 4840, 343 Second Street Northeast from neighborhood commercial to residential, be read a first time, and that staff be directed to advertise bylaw 2023 3472 as per the public notice policy.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Just thought this was residential, went to commercial, now no longer needs to be commercial, it's going back to residential.
That's correct, your worship.
Called question, all in favor? Unfinished business, Director Masal again, we have 2024 city of Waverne budget.
Yes, okay.
You don't sound too excited, but this is exciting.
It is exciting, I know, everyone thinks it's really exciting. All right, so the city of Waverne, our budget approach has not changed from prior, from our prior years. So we look to balance the city of Waverne rate pair's interest with continued growth and prosperity to provide a budget that enables growth and balance, so all departments can request to continue to provide a high level of service and programs. We've been continuing to take into consideration the infrastructure gap, set out short and long-term plans addressing that maintenance and replacement of major capital to manage budgetary challenges with the increase in supply and capital costs, and to maintain tax policies to keep Waverne competitive with other Saskatchewan cities. So as we've stated many times in the past, our general operations in the city are funded through grants and tax revenue primarily, and our utility functions, they are funded by the user fees collected, so this would be your utility bills, our landfill fees, and through capital grants. So we have a comparison to the other cities. We've shown for our municipal taxes, so we are middle of the row for our tax levy per capita, so it shows that we have 11,000 people living in Waverne, and in 2022, we brought in just under 9.5 million in taxes. So our residential taxes in comparison to other cities, we are pretty close to the bottom, we are fifth from the bottom compared to other cities. So on average, so with a $250,000 taxable assessment, the city of Waverne is at $1,746. With our commercial, if we take 500,000 taxable assessment, we are in the middle, that's what, 7,800 on the 500,000 taxable. So we had our preliminary budget on October 23, and the city proposed 6.47 increase in taxes. This equaled to 650,467 in revenue. Following that primarily budget, preliminary budget presentation, we had a open house on November 7 to provide opportunity for the public to come and see and talk to everybody and consult and have some input. So further review updates were made, and we made some reductions to the operating budget, and it is now at 5.2%. So there wasn't anything huge that was removed necessarily. We did have some, some grant money coming in that we were made aware of. We did remove the council, council chamber seating upgrades, we reclassed a few things, we updated some wages, and we updated some of the transfers to reserves for our vehicles and for the asphalt rehabilitation project. So as you can see, each department, it shows the increase or the decrease that they propose for the taxes, and that's how we come up with our 5.2%. So it's made up of 350,000 to come from our mail rates and 171,000 to come from our base tax, and that equals a $40 increase in our base tax. So what does that mean on a residence that has $250,000 in taxable assessment with no change to the provincial education mail rate? This would mean an increase of about $46 on their municipal tax and an increase of $40 on their base tax, so a total of an increase of $86, and that works out to about 5.15%. So that works out to be about $7.16 per month. And we've just shown a breakdown of the, what your property tax are, how much of it you would pay to your education tax, and how much is actually the municipal that we bring in. So the municipality on 250,000 would receive $1,887, and the education tax on that would be $1,135. So the education tax is about 37% of your property tax. So how is the city going to be funded? So our general operating is funded through our property tax, our grant funding, fees and charges on services, some reserve funding and investment income. We're looking to bring in about 12.9 million in property tax, that's 56% of our funding, 6 million in grant funding, which is 26%, just under 2 million in fees and services, that makes up 8.5%. Reserve funding of 1.2 million, and that's 5.5%, and just under a million investment income, which makes up 3.63%. So our utility fund, which is primarily from fees, we're looking to bring in about 6.195% or 6.195 million, and that's 98.41%. Other, our operating capital funds, so this money primarily comes from either a transfer from the operating or from reserves or internal loans that we provide. So we were looking to have operating pay for about 1.359 million, that's 17.28%, and reserve funding to fund 6.5 million, so that's just under 83%. So that's a total, including our utilities and our capital of 37 million. capital of thirty-seven million. Okay, so our two thousand twenty-four operating capital budget. So as shown above, on our operating side, our operating budget is twenty-two million, our capital budget is three point five for a total of twenty-five, twenty-five point seven, seven-five million. So there's a breakdown of how our net operating budget is calculated. So our net operating expenses, this does not include our utilities, is twenty-two million. We receive unconditional grants of about two point five million, conditional grants of eight hundred and eighteen thousand, fee revenues just under two million, the interest is eight hundred and thirty-seven, reserves from operating is one point two, internal transfers from other operating is one point eight, and that brings us back to what we are budgeting to bring in from tax revenue of twelve point nine eight seven million dollars. So our facilities fleet and infrastructure revitalization program, this is all funded through a general, primarily through a general operating, our utility and our landfill, they all transfer to this account. So these amounts, these expenditures are included in the general operating and the utility funds. So for these funds to operate, they will cost or they're budgeted at three point four six six million, and they have a capital budget of six hundred and sixty thousand. Our utility and our landfill budget. So these ones, as I said before, they're funded through our fees and grants and not through taxation. So the utility and water treatment plant operating is five point one million, the landfill operating is one point three, and they have four point three million budgeted for capital. And the next few pages are just breakdowns of all of our revenue, our expenses by department. So our expenses for administration are budgeted to be three point six million, police services is four point six, fires one point four, planning and development three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, leisure is six point one, parks is one point five, engineering nine hundred thousand, and public works is three point six. And then it shows the capital that we have budgeted within the operating. So equipment at four hundred and forty-eight thousand, our vehicles of one hundred and ten, streets and roads is just under three million, and land at seventy-five thousand. So to break down for facilities funds, so within there, so these funds, as I said, they're funded through the other, through the general and the utility and landfill. So their revenue is primarily from transfers from other departments, which is at two points, just under two point four million. The expenses within the facilities fund is eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, the fleet is one point five million, and the IRP, which is the infrastructure revitalization, is just over a million. So we have equipment in there budgeted for seven hundred and fifteen thousand. And our operating. So our operating is six point one nine five million for fees and charges. They have a hundred thousand for conditional grants and a hundred and twenty-seven from internal transfers from other departments. So our utility is expenditures are budgeted at two point nine million, the water treatment plant is at two point one eight million, and the landfill at one point three. Their capital is equipment at a million, the buildings at two point nine million, and water mains at four hundred thousand. So the rest of the presentation is a breakdown of each department, what has wages. Primarily, they're all wages. They show professional fees, utilities, maintenance, grants, interest, and any internal transfers that would go to the other funds. I won't go through each of those, but it shows their percentage increases on each of those. And that is it. So in conclusion, with all that, we are looking to bring out in just over five hundred and twenty thousand, and it's a five point two percent increase in taxes.
Motion?
Your worship, I could make a motion that the city of Waverham two thousand twenty-four operating budget with a five point two percent increase, including a forty dollar increase to base tax, be approved as presented.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion? I just want to say that today, first off, thank you Laura, for you and all your team that worked through this to and the administration to get the budget in as good as what we can, get a good open house. And you pointed out, I still, I keep coming back to this, that the book I read when I first came here and seven years ago, taking on mayor, there was a book written by Suma. At that time, Suma was talking about that in nineteen eighty, we, the city only had to raise twenty percent of what our total budget. So we would have only had to raise twenty percent of thirty-seven million. We are now way over that, and we're still being pushed down. So we are, if people say that, you know, why is the city raising their taxes as such? But we are, it has been a constant erosion by the provincial and federal governments of not pushing, not giving us more taxes, not keeping up with what they have been giving over the years. And plus, we also are doing our best through our engineering departments to provide you with, number one, good, good roads, and through our water and utilities part, doing proper water and sewer. There are many places in the world which simply are getting water once, you know, one hour a day. We have lots of ample good clean water, some of the better water in the province, and we are doing very well to these departments. So this is what we are doing on here. There is not a lot of stuff going on. So I want to thank all the departments that work together very much to provide us with this budget that we have here. See, you go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, worship. I want to, I just want to go over a few numbers to make sure that I understand everything correctly, which hit or miss sometimes with me. But I also want, the term that comes to mind when I review some of this, and I appreciate all of your work in the comparative analysis with other communities in the province. I think that is important for us to have a gauge of what these numbers mean, Laura. So one of the ones I found in there that was very interesting was the taxation levy per capita. I don't know if you've done that one before, and I haven't paid enough attention to it, or if it's a new measure. But at eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and change per capita, I'm not sure what page that's on, I'm sorry, but that puts us the second lowest in the province. And the only one lower than us is the Saskatchewan half of Lloydminster. So I would say, the term that comes to mind as I read through a lot of these is punching above our weight a little bit, right? So I'm gonna, through some of this, I also want to send kudos to the city departments that clearly are running fairly efficiently. If they're able to provide the level of service that we get while keeping us at the, really, the second lowest effective tax rate per person, I think that's quite an achievement. So I thank you for that. On the residential side, we're at seventeen hundred and forty-six dollars on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessment. That makes us the fifth lowest in the province. That is a very good place to be. On the commercial and industrial assessment, if you were a five hundred thousand dollar assessment, that would be seven hundred and eight, seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, puts us smack dab in the middle of the provincial pack, which is a good place to be in my estimation. So Laura, if I understand this correctly, on somebody who had an average house in Waverham two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessment, that five point two percent would translate to roughly seven dollars and sixteen cents a month for them. So I think that is a great spot that you folks have gotten us to, and I thank you for that. I just wanted to make note, sometimes there are comparisons to other communities that we don't talk about. And one of them is, you know, there's a, there's a, there's another city very similar to ours, and they collect about seven million dollars a year more in taxes than we do. And that's not because their taxation rate is five times ours, it's because they have higher assessment. And I want to make sure I'm phrasing that correctly.
Yeah, that's correct. They also do, quite a few of these cities have more commercial, so they do bring in a higher percentage in commercial than we do. So that makes a difference. So yeah, putting it per capita, I mean, you could, it's an easy way to calculate, but some of these cities do bring a lot for commercial. So including those could skew it a little, too.
So that's some work we have to do is to get some more commercial taxation. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the budget.
Six?
I too would like to commend administration. I know over the conversations we've had in the last little while, we've come to you several times to try to, to reduce and yet not cut any services. And I think we can be very pleased as a council and as a community that we're able to do that. There's other communities in the province that are literally talking about cutting, having to cut millions of dollars out of their budget, which also equates to cutting services out of their budget. And I can sleep better at night knowing we didn't cut any services to our residents, and we still were able to reduce the budget. So good work.
Mr. Chaney?
And then I'll echo Counselors Rick, Aaron, and Higgs' comments. And I also want to recognize Police Commission put a lot of work into squeezing their budget and trying to make it as efficient as possible as well. So let's not leave them out.
Scored.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I'd like to echo the foster staff and everyone involved in the process of going, presenting the budget. It is not an easy thing, and it takes an inordinate amount of time. And this is not something that comes together in a short period of time. We've been working on this for a number of months. I'd also like to thank everyone who came out during the open house process, to hear from the community and what's important to them influences our decision-making. Even though it's, we're having an increase this year, it's something that, there are a lot of variables affecting that. But again, we're not cutting services, and we're continuing to invest in infrastructure, which I think is incredibly important for us. To not do that, it ends up costing us significantly more in the future. So that's something that we have to keep in mind when we're at this time of year. Yes, there is an increase, but it is as minimal as possible, and yet still investing in our community and the services that we have. So thanks to everyone involved in this.
Laura?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to again echo the thanks to administration and all of the departments. I know we came back to you with a big red pencil and said, okay, please cut more. But I just wanted to let the public know that we as council do not take any sort of tax increase lightly. We all pay taxes in this city as well, and five point two percent can be a lot for people. So we do take that into consideration when trying to keep the taxes as low as humanly possible here in Waverham.
Mr. Van Bessley, anything? I just want to make note, though, too, because the school taxes make up fifty-six percent, did you say? Thirty-seven percent. That although our property, our increase is only five percent, if theirs goes up more than that seven dollars per month, that we're seven point, seven fifty a month on here, it could be, it'll be directly related to what the school, because they haven't set their school rates yet. So we'll have to see where they go with theirs. No more comments? Call, call the question, all in favor? Terence Adams. This, by passing this budget, go ahead. Okay, yes. By passing this budget, we are able to now give the freedom to our engineering department to, and several other departments, to put bids forward, start putting out requests for proposals, start doing a lot of bidding, asking for bids on a lot of the projects that we approved in this budget, which gives us a huge jump forward. And so as soon as the cold weather is over with and the snow goes, that we are able to, whatever snow it is, it goes, it is able to move forward on our projects that we're going to have. And hopefully, too, that we'll see some more of our, the government, Saskatchewan government produce more highway infrastructure stuff that runs through our city, so we can improve those things, too. There's other grants that will come up through the years that we're unaware of. New business, Mr. Warren, General Hospital, Hello, Pat, a letter of non-opposition.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So in two thousand twenty, the government of Saskatchewan announced that the location of the new healthcare facility in Waverham would be to replace the current Waverham General Hospital, relocated on Fifth Avenue on the north side of the city. In two thousand twenty-two, the heliport was approved as part of the scope of the new Waverham General Hospital project. The Canadian Aviation Regulation set the laws and regulations that govern aviation. Transport Canada is a federal government agency that is responsible for developing regulations for all transportation in Canada. Through the Canadian Aviation Regulations, the province of Saskatchewan must consult with the city and provide evidence of consultation to the federal regulator to receive certification for the heliport. If the city has no objections to the construction of the heliport, the city would provide a letter of non-opposition for Transport Canada. The Waverham General Hospital's owner's representative team hosted an open house at the Craig Union Sparks Center on November twenty-eighth, and occurred from five till seven P M. The open house provided an opportunity for residents to learn about the heliport and ask aviation-specific questions to owner representative teams, aviation experts. In total, we have thirty-two members of the public attend that event. The following organizations attended on behalf of the owner's representative teams. So one is Ground Effects. So they are the heliport specialists, focused on technical questions and transport Canada processes. STARS, so they will be the primary user of the heliport, and they discuss STARS operations and technical information. The Ministry of Health, which is funding and programming towards the new hospital. Ministry of SAS Builds and Procurement, accountable for construction of the new facility and the heliport. Saskatchewan Health Authority, which is accountable for operation of the facility and operating the heliport. And then Rate Construction, who's a design builder of the heliport and the new facility. So there's some key details that were provided by the owner representative teams in regards to heliport. So the heliport will be located within the property on, of the new general hospital on the northwest corner of the park, and I'll show you some pictures when I go through this part of the presentation. The heliport will be used only for medical purposes, so EMS, air ambulance services provided by STARS, and will not be used for non-hospital, non-medical purposes. Most patient transfers will be from the Waverham General Hospital to the Regina General Hospital. However, the heliport could receive patients from seeing calls, emergencies within the hospital service area. When they look at their numbers for estimate of flights, so estimated number of flights is approximately sixteen trips a year. The primary approach path for the flights will occur to the north, from east to west, with a secondary flight path on the south diagram, one which I'll show you after I go through this part of the presentation. Big concerns that we do receive in regards to heliport is the noise footprint. So the noise footprint of a helicopter is normally less than noise generated by a small airplane during takeoff and comparable to that of airplane during other phases of flight. The small and medium-sized helicopter produced noise levels in the range of eighty-five to ninety-five decibels at a distance, so that's vertical and horizontal of one hundred and fifty meters. This is comparable to noise generated by a garbage truck, busy roadways, or an ambulance, and is less common than yard tools such as a lawnmower. Flight operations and those conducted at night should comply with good noise abatement procedures. So they do ask the operators of the helicopters to fly neighborly in their approach when using the heliport. Pilots are encouraged to use noise abatement profiles, altitudes, and power settings when flying over a populated area. The heliport will be operational at the time of project turnover to the owner. The anticipated completion, anticipated completion date for the new Waverham General Hospital is late two thousand twenty-six. So as discussed, I did talk about some flight patterns. So this is the deeper area, east to west. On the north side of the property, heliport is here for the larger flight patterns, smaller flight pattern you can see here coming through the south. Here's a diagram of where the heliport would be located on the northern part of the property, away from any residential and further back into the twenty acres of land that is there for the new Waverham General Hospital. And this is just our view of the heliport and the landing area that they would have at the new Waverham General Hospital site. um, at the new Waverne General Hospital site. Uh, so a recommendation for administration is I recommend that Waverne City Council provide a letter of non-opposition to Transport Canada, saying the city of Waverne has no objection to the Waverne General Hospital heliport construction.
Your worship, I am pleased to move the city council to provide a letter of non-opposition to Transport Canada, stating that the city of Waverne has no objection to the Waverne Hospital heliport construction at the proposed site.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion?
I would only add that, uh, the, um, S H A, the STARS ambulance folks, and the Hospital Foundation put on an excellent event with, at our facility, and that, uh, everyone who attended seemed to be walking away from that well-informed, and it was really, uh, it was a treat to see that many people that engaged and involved in it, and I think it was a huge win for, uh, the project, for the community to have that event, so well done, everyone who was involved in that.
Also on, there was a question on lights, lighting of it, and with it, it is like the same thing as what we have at our municipal, it is, um, I forget the technical term of it, but basically, the red lights will encircle it, or they'll be on all the time, and then coming in, seven clicks, the pilot will click seven times, and that turns it full L E D, three times afterwards, we'll cut it to half, and then another, uh, three will shut it right off. So these lights won't be, it won't be like we've got the lights on all the time coming in there, there'll be only, the red lights will encircle it all the time, but it works. So this is, uh, these are very good for what we're doing. With that being said, call the question, all in favor? With that, as he said, you see that two thousand twenty-six hopefully is the completion date, and, uh, hopefully be even sooner with, especially with this winter being as open as it is or moving forward. Choirs announcements, statements, anybody? Mr. Warren?
I have one tonight, your worship. You did mention tonight is the last meeting for us this year, but it's also last meeting for our city clerk, Donette Richter. Um, Donette's been with us for thirty years plus, uh, within the organization, um, and for the last seventeen years as our city clerk, uh, so Donette started in this position on June twenty-sixth of two thousand and six. Um, she has had the opportunity to work with many different councils, mayors, councillors, um, city managers, administrators, and she's always drawn true leadership in that position, providing support to all of us new faces, and she's always a consistent person within our operations. She's been really positive on her commitments to the Walk of Fame and on the youth council, uh, her leadership through elections, which, that is a very hard job that only special people can do. Um, Donette's been a really strong member of our team, and she'll be missed dearly. Um, and it's, it's hard for me to, because I've worked with Donette since I've started here, um, and I do thank you for everything you've done for the city of Waverne.
Uh, thanks, city manager Warren, I, I appreciate those kind words. Um, it's been a privilege to work for the city of Waverne for over thirty years. Uh, I started my career way back in the finance department, uh, way back in nineteen eighty-nine, probably, our city manager was pretty young back then, um, and I worked in several departments. I started out on a three-month casual hire, and here I am. Um, I worked from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-three in several departments. I worked, uh, the finance department, recreation, tourism, building, and engineering, um, and in nineteen, uh, just till nineteen ninety-three, and then I took a little hiatus, uh, came back in nineteen ninety-seven, back to the finance department, where I remained there until two thousand and six. And in two thousand and six, former city clerk Cheryl Roman retired, and, um, the city manager of the day, Bob Smith, gave me an opportunity to be the new city clerk for the city of Waverne, and here I am, three years later, and, uh, several councillors have, uh, have passed through over that time, and, um, yeah, I've been, I've been here when we moved from the old city hall across the street to the new city hall, which isn't so new here anymore. Um, I was here for the construction of the new city works and fire hall, which isn't very new anymore either. Uh, I was here for the twenty eleven flood, I've worked five regular elections and two by-elections, um, I've worked with many councils, committees, and boards, and as Matthew mentioned, I had a couple of favorites, which was definitely youth council, and I really enjoyed Walk of Fame, two really positive boards and committees that I got to be on. Um, working for the city, uh, as a public servant has had its challenges, um, but it's also rewarding. Uh, I've had the pleasure of working with some amazing people in this room and many before you. Uh, I've had the opportunity to meet premiers, uh, federal MPs, opposition leaders, and even a couple of celebrities along the way. Um, I just want to thank you all in this room and all the former coun, former council members, all the former, uh, staff, coworkers, colleagues that I've met and worked with over the years, it's been a pleasure.
I'd just like to congratulate, uh, Ms. Richter on her, uh, retirement, although I suspect she'll find something else to take up her time, but, um, in my time as a council here, I've grown a great deal of respect for, for what she does, her professionalism, and how well she does her job, and how she takes it so seriously. And I, again, just, I'd like to congratulate her on her time going forward and thank her for her time here with the city.
Yep. Any other comments? Uh, you wanted to announce other announcement, uh, C P train is gonna be on, the holiday train will be on, uh, seventeenth of December, this Sunday, this Sunday, is that correct? Yes, and, uh, yeah, this is, and it will be here, and they'll be, uh, five thirty, it'll be here. So that's the, the other announcement we're having. Nothing more? Uh, there's no notice of motions, so just before we do the adjournment, um, on behalf of myself and the council, we should wish all the citizens of Waverne the best of holiday festival season, whatever you may take this to be, and that we, uh, would like to wish you the best in the new year coming up, two thousand twenty-four. We will be back here January eighth before our next council meeting, but again, the best of the season to all of you, and we, all of our staff here and all of our council worked very hard, uh, for all through two thousand twenty-three, and we will continue on forward with that in two thousand twenty-four, and we will see you in the new year. With that, I will call this meeting adjourned.